Peace be upon you. This is Said Mirza from millionar reason dot com. We're gonna continue with our Quran study session. This is chapter number twenty-two of the Quran and complete revelation. Let's begin. In the name of God, the mighty and merciful, I seek refuge in God from Satan, the accursed. Oh mankind, be in prudent fear of your lord. The conversion of the hour is a tremendous thing. Or the shaking of the hour is a tremendous thing. The day you see it, everyone nursing will neglect what she suckled and everyone pregnant would deliver her burden. And thou will see mankind intoxicated when they are not intoxicated, but the punishment of God is severe. Now, a lot of people get hung up on this thou and they say, oh, this is a very difficult translation. Why don't you use an easier translation? Actually, it's not a difficult translation. You should be endeavoring to look up words in the dictionary so you can increase your vocabulary. And understand the word of God in a better manner. I mean, I don't see the point of of simplifying things with when you lose detail, you know, that's what it is. The reason for using thou is because there's three modes of addressing someone in the Arabic language. There is you singular as in you in in just you and there's you dual, which means you two, two people. And then there's you plural as in you all, right? And in English, obviously now, uh, the because English has been degraded, there's only you now and that takes care of you alone or you too or you all. Um, uh, this thou is from the old English and that basically this differentiates and so thou is the first. Just you, one, one, one you. Okay, that's it. That's why this he's using, but against is using the word thou. And the reason is that because the Quran shifts between uh, you uh, i- in, in one person as in you, you, you only or you two or you all. Okay, it does. Um, and when it's using thou, it's addressing the recipient of the Quran, Muhammad. Uh, and also my understanding is also addressing someone who is reading the Quran carefully as in reciting it. Um, and those people who are hearing it, they are addressed in the you all. That's my understanding of it. So this is why this is important. To keep this nuance, to record it. So you will see mankind intoxicated when they are not intoxicated. And among men is he who disputes concerning God without knowledge and follows every rebellious Satan. Against whom it is decreed that whoso takes him as ally, him will he lead astray and guide him to the punishment of the infernal. Now, this is obviously talking about Shaytan, the original um Shaytan, Ibelis and his progeny. So among men is he who disputes concerning God without knowledge. This is a specific sort of person. This, th- these are the thought leaders, okay? These are the youngs and uh, uh, needs and um the Descartes, Descartes, whatever he's called. These are the men, okay? Because they dispute concerning God without knowledge. And they follow every rebellious Satan. They follow their own whims and desires, which is what Satan is all about. He, he, he he arouses us in us desires, see? And by doing that, these thought leaders, they uh, they lead astray other men. Uh, because they are themselves being led astray by every rebellious Satan. This subject will be picked up later. So just giving you an idea because at, at, at the core really Satan is the one who's misguiding, but then he has allies among men who are furthering his cause. And the general lady, the, the, the general people, they worship these men as in they hang on to their words or they revere them, they, they follow them. And uh, this way they all enter the fire, okay? Verse five, oh mankind, if you are in doubt about the resurrection, then we created you from dust, then from a sperm drop, then from a clinging thing. Then from a fleshy lump formed and unformed, that we might make plain to you. And we settle in the wombs what we will to a stated term. Then we bring you forth of a child, then that you should reach your maturity and among you is he who is taken. And among you is he who was sent back to the most abject age, so that he knows not after knowledge anything. And thou sees the earth lifeless, then when we send down upon it water, it quivers and swells and grows every delightful kind. For it is that God, he is the truth and that he gives life to the dead and that he is over all things powerful. Now, this is talking about, this is detailing the three creations really. The first creation was the creation from dust. This is how, what, how Adam was created, okay? Then his progeny was created from a sperm drop. And then finally, when the hour strikes and men are resurrected, they will again be created from dust. As in the original man was created, so. And God is giving us the example of the earth because the earth is also dust. And he, you see that the earth is lifeless as in it's dead. And then when God sends down rain, it quivers and swirls and grows every delightful kind. So you see this happening. This is cyclical, so. This is not a big deal for God, basically, this uh, resurrecting the dead. And that the hour about which there is no doubt is coming and that God will raise those in the graves. Now, the subject about these needs and the youngs are, is again taken up. And among men is he who disputes concerning God without knowledge or guidance or illuminating writ. Turning aside proudly to lead away from the path of God. For him in the world is disgrace and on the day of resurrection, we will let him taste the punishment of the consuming fire. For it is that thy hands send ahead and that God is not unjust to the servants. See, these, these are the thought leaders. They, they turn aside proudly. They are not willing to accept that God send down knowledge, guidance or illuminating writ. They, they seek to um reach God using their own intellect. And they turn aside proudly from his guidance and they lead away from the path of God. And on the day of resurrection, they will taste the punishment of consuming fire. Remember this punishment of consuming fire because it shows up again. For it is that thy sent, thy hand sent ahead and that God is not unjust to the servants. And among men is he who serves God upon an edge. If good befalls him, he is a swish thereby, but if a means of denial befalls him, he makes an about face. He has lost the world and the hereafter. That is the clear loss. Why? Because he was tempted uh, by this life, uh, when the circumstances were not going in his favor. He abandoned uh, the service of God. Um, and he called to the Satan, see? He calls besides God to where that which neither harms him nor benefits him. That is the extreme error. He calls to him whose harm is nearer than his benefit. Evil is the protector and evil is the associate. So he at one point believed, but then he disbelieved because uh, that path was the hard path. And he began serving his old master. God will make those who heed warning and do righteous deeds enter gardens beneath which rivers flow. God does what he wills. Okay, now you will see in this chapter that there's a juxtaposition between those who heed warning, the believers and those who don't heed warning as in the kafirs, those who ignore warning. Uh, you'll see that this is the juxtaposition between them, where they end up uh, respectively. So the, those who heed warning, they entered garden. Now, whoso thinks that God will not help him in the world and the hereafter, let him stretch out means to the sky, then let him cross. And let him look, will his plan remove what he enrages at, what enrages? My understanding is this is talking about this enemy of those who heed warning, okay? This man, he, he hates those who heed warning. And God is saying that if he thinks that the God will not help the believers in the world, the hereafter, then let him use every means at his disposal. That's what this means, uh, besabila samai. And let him cross means as in let him execute his plan and let him look, let him see. Uh, does his plan, uh, does this plan take care of the unbelie- the believers as in is this plan? Does his work plan work against the believers? Because it won't, because God will help them, the believers. And thus have we set it down as clear proofs and because God guides whom he wills. Now, those two factions I was referring to, this is again called opened up here. You have one faction, which is those who heed warning. Um, these uh, this is just a general group, okay? They don't really have any allegiances. They don't belong to any religions. And they are uh, they are set against, as you see the others, those who heed warning. And those who hold to Judaism and the Sabine's and the Christians and the Magians and those who has kind of partnership. God will decide between them on the day of resurrection. God is witness over all things. So the, those who heed warning, this is just a general uh, term and it, these are the men who believe in God in the last day. Uh, they are disputing. This is all about dispute, right? They're disputing with the people of this group. Because the people of this group who are the religionists, um, but they actually be unbelievers. See Judaism, Sabine's, Christians, Magians and those who have sky of partnership. And they are basically disagreeing about what? That God will raise people from the grace. So God says, God will decide between them on the day of resurrection. God is witness over all things. And then God again, uh, is, is bringing our attention to his power. Does thou not see that to God submits whoso is in the heavens and whoso is in the earth and the sun and the moon and the stars and the mountains and the trees and the creatures? And many among mankind and upon many has the punishment become binding and whom God humiliates, he has none to honor him. God does what he wills. These are two disputants, okay? Again, these two disputants, the he, those who heed warning and the rest of the group. And the rest, rest of the, the other people. These are two disputants who have disputed about their lord. Then those who ignore warning, garments of fire have been cut for them. Poured above their heads will be scalding water. Melted thereby will be what is in their bellies as well as their skins and for them are restraints of iron. Whenever they desire to come out there from, from anguish, they will be returned there too and taste the punishment of the consuming fire. Now, a lot of people in the Quran space, they think that these are allegorical punishments or metaphorical and that, you know, this is not what's gonna happen. Um, the Quran is very detailed in, in showing, in, in describing these punishments. Uh, so yes, this is what's gonna happen. Twenty-three, God will make those who heed warning and do righteous deeds enter gardens beneath which rivers flow. They will be adorned therein with bracelets of gold and pearls and they remain, they will be, therein will be silk. And they were guided to the good of speech and were guided to the path of the praiseworthy. Those who ignore warning and turn away from the path of God and the inviolable place of worship which we made for mankind. Alike are the one remaining in it and the one without, and whoso seeks therein deviation by injustice, him will be taste of a painful punishment. Excuse me, okay. So those men who ignore warning and turn away from the path of God and the inviolable place of worship, which is the Majdil Haram, but this is not the Majdil Haram that the Saudis will have you believe. Wherever this was, whatever it was, this time is gone. Because this was a platform for the believers to come together and the messenger to call men towards God. And that was, mission was finished and Majdil Haram is, is not, is no more, so. Doesn't matter. Those who ignore warning and turn away from the god, from the path of God, for them is a painful punishment, basically. And when we settle for Abraham, the position of the house, ascribe thou not a partnership with me to anything and purify thou my house for those who walk around and those who stand and the lowly and the submitting. And proclaim thou among mankind, the pilgrimage, they will come to thee on foot and on every lean mount, they will come from every deep mountain pass. That they might witness benefits for them and remember the name of God on days appointed. Over the provision of livestock cattle, so eat thereof and feed the unfortunate poor. Then let them make an end of their encampment and fulfill their vows and walk around the ancient house. Now, this is basically um, a little bit of history. Why is, why is when this is used, this is about recalling the past, okay? And this is what's for Abraham. That God uh, settled him. The position of the house and uh, he was to call men towards God. Uh, this is not what a Muslim would have you believe. The hajj that they're doing, because the hajj they're doing is, is just pure idol worship. They're just circling and revering and kissing and and doing sujood, which they, which they say means to basically prostrate on your hands and feet. Towards a stone idol. That's just idolatry, okay? This is not what this is. And uh, you, you know, a lot of people who want to argue with you, they'll say, look at saying uh, and walk around the ancient house. Okay, yeah, the word yatawaffo does not mean to circambulate, okay? It's nothing to do with, with circling something. It just means to walk around or visit. And that's how the Quran uses this word. Anyway, I don't wanna get drawn into that right now. Let's just keep going. Thirty, that. And whoso honors the sacred things of God, it is better for him in the sight of his lord. And the cattle are lawful to you, save that recited to you and avoid the abomination of idols and avoid false speech. See, abomination of idols. So avoid idols. That is the ka- the, the Kaaba, the cube structure that they have built is an idol. Inclining towards God, not ascribing a partnership to him and whoso ascribes a partnership to God, it is as if he had fallen from the sky, then the bird snatch him away or the wind sweeps him away to a far off place. Ascribing a partnership to God is, is a very is an injustice, okay? The Quran talks about this a lot. And what you will find that is very interesting about the religion Islam is that the vision of Islam's initiating statement. Uh, the kalima, the shahada is, is ascribing, um how do I put this delicately? It's about joining the name of God and the name of Muhammad, because that's how it goes. It goes, I um Laila Ilaha Illallah Muhammadul Sula, there is no God but God. And Muhammad is the messenger of God, okay? And you will not find this statement anywhere in the Quran. There is nothing in the Quran about having to utter a statement. Laila Ilaha Illallah Muhammadul Sula in order to enter the form of Islam, okay? This is all made up stuff. That's not to say that I don't believe that Muhammad is the messenger of God. He is the messenger of God, so is Musa, so is um, Isa. So is Ibrahim, see, but you uh the Quran's message is about proclaiming the glory of God, God alone. This, this seems to escape uh, the Muslims. They uh, they have to have the name of God and Muhammad side by side. If you ever go to their masjids, you'll see that that's really prominent. Uh, anyway, so just trying to show you that this religion that claims to take the Quran as its authority is actually really far away from the principles that are laid out in the Quran. Thirty-two, and that, and whoso honors the tokens of God, then it is from the prudent fear of the hearts. For you in them are benefits to a stated term, then is their place of sacrifice to the ancient house. Let's talk about the cattle. Because they were supposed to be um, sacrificed and then the, the poor were supposed to be fed from it. That was the point of this pilgrimage, okay? And uh again, I'll get, get into a rant here. Anyway, verse thirty-four. And for every community we appointed right, that they remember the name of God over what he has provided them of livestock cattle. And your God is one God, so submit to him and bear thou glad tidings to the humble or the reverent. Whoso, whose hearts are afraid when God is remembered and those patient over and befalls them and who uphold the duty and of what we have provided them, they spend. And the camels, we appointed them for you among the tokens of God, for you in them is good. So remember the name of God over them when they are in lines and when their frank's flanks collapse, eat thereof and feed the reticent, reticent poor. And the beggar, those have we made them subject for you that you might be grateful. Now, the, the traditional has a whole elaborate ceremony which he does, um well, I wouldn't say a ceremony, but anyway, he has a, a, a way of doing it, a way of, of slaughtering animals, okay? I've seen it. Um, but whereas here it says, just recite the name of God over them when they are in lines and when their flanks collapse, as in when you have, you know um, sacrifice them, then, then eat thereof, that's it. The Quran is giving you a general guideline. Um, if you know anything about Judaism, Judaism has a lot of this too, where they, they, they have like a step by step thing, like very like uh, rigid. Thirty-seven, their flesh does not reach God nor their blood, but prudent fear reaches him from you. Thus have we made them subject for you that you might magnify God for guiding you and bear thou glad tidings to doers of good. God defends those who heed warning. God loves not every treacherous ingrate. Leave, leave is given to those who are fought because they were wrong and God is able to help them. Those who have been turned out of their homes without cause, save that they said, our lord is God and were God not to repel some people by means of others. Pious communities would be destroyed and trade and duties and places of worship where in the name of God is remembered much. But God will help him who helps him. God is strong and exalted in might. Those who, if we establish them in the land, uphold the duty and render the purity and enjoy what is fitting and forbid perversity and to God belongs the final outcome of matters. Now, just if you use a little bit of common sense here, this upholding a duty here does not mean to start praying five times a day. It's not what it means. It doesn't make any sense because this is talking in general, see, it's saying uh God defends those who heed warning. God loves not every treacherous ingrate. So these are men, there are men who are ingrates, who are treacherous, as in they don't keep to their com- commitments, okay? Um, they're devious. And leave is given those who are fought because they were wrong, so they're wrong men. Okay, so leave is given to those who are fought because they were wrong by this, these treacherous men. And God will help them. Because they, they were only saying our lord is God. And for that reason, they were kicked out of their homes. And it says, God, were God not to repel by some people by means of others, pious communities would be destroyed. So these pious communities are the ones in which there are men who are upholding the law of God. As in they are righteous men. They, they believe in equity and justice and they are striving for that. And trade and duties, see? Fair trade, duties, again, this is a general term. And places of worship where in the name of God is remembered much. Yes, this here is, is making the case that yes, the community should have places of worship where in the name of God is remembered much. So when God established them, establishes them in the land, they uphold his laws. That's what the word salat means. And render the purity, bring the purity and enjoy what is fitting and forbid perversities. See, this all flows together. And if they deny thee, then they have denied before them the people of Nuh and Ad and Famaud and the people of Ibrahim and the people of Luth. And the people of Madyan and Musa was denied, so I granted the false claimers of guidance respite, then I seized them. Then how was my rejection? And how many a city did we destroy when it was doing wrong and is desolate and a deserted well and a lofty castle? Have they not traveled in the earth and had hearts with which to reason or ears with which to hear? And it is not the eyes that are blind, but blind are the hearts which are in the breasts. And they ask thee to hasten the punishment, but God does not fail in his promise. And a day with thy lord is a thousand years of what you count. And how many a city did I grant respite when I was doing wrong? Then I seized it and to me is the journey's end. Similarly, the time we live in, you can see the city is doing much evil. But God is granting them respite. Then he will seize them. Say thou, oh mankind, I am only a clear warner to you. Those who heed warning and do righteous deeds, they have pardon and a noble provision. And those who strive against our proofs to frustrate them, those are the companions of hell. And we have sent not before thee any messenger or prophet, save that when he desired, the Satan cast into his desire. But God abolishes what the Satan casts, then God makes firm his proofs and God is knowing and wise. Now, my understanding is that this is talking about that the messenger prophets were not immune to the whisperings of the Satan. But in the case of the revelation, when the revelation was being transmitted, God abolished what the Satan cast and he made firm his proofs. Okay, so there was no tampering with the revelation of God as it was being delivered to the message, messenger, because the messenger's role is to deliver the message of God verbatim. So there could be no tampering. But uh, otherwise they were fallible men. That he might make what the Satan casts a means of denial for those in whose hearts is disease and those whose hearts are hard and the wrongdoers are in extreme schism. Okay, now what does the Satan cast that is a means of denial for those in whose hearts is disease? That's the question, right? Well, we're gonna see later on what it's talking about, but just to give you an idea. This is talking about the doubt that men have that they will be raised because this whole chapter is about the day of resurrection. So Satan casts in men the, the whisperings that, you know this day will not really come, right? The day, there's no day of judgment, so do what you will, right? Um, and uh, this is a means of denial. Because by this means you enter into unbelief. And uh, the wrongdoers are in extreme schism. This means, this could mean like a separation or confusion. And that those given knowledge might know that it's a truth from thy lord and believe in it and their hearts might humble themselves to them and God guides those who heed warning to a straight path. There's two readings of this. One reading is that when they see these, uh, these men in whose hearts is disease, they see them wavering and doubting those given knowledge, their uh, their belief increases. Uh, because God is already telling us about this, right? A lot of times when God is giving us these proofs, actually it's for the believers. Um so their, their faith is increased because they see God's words basically come into effect. Um, the other reading would be that when those given knowledge, as in they have studied the scripture and they've gained understanding, they know that is a truth from thy lord and they believe in it. So, and their hearts might humble themselves to him. And God guides those who heed warning to a straight path. And those who ignore warning will not cease to be in doubt about it until the hour comes upon them unexpectedly or there comes to them the punishment of a tremendous uh, or, or there comes to them the punishment of a barren day. So, and those who ignore warning will not cease to be in doubt about it. About the hour, but again, so here's uh, of the understanding, the Quran, which, which, which makes sense as well. I mean, that's, there's multiple readings to this. Um I mean, if you wanna read it that way, then you could read it this way that uh, those who strive against our proofs to frustrate them, those are the companions of hell. So in keeping in line with this. And we have sent not before thee any messenger or prophet, save that when he desired, the Satan cast into his desire, as in they were not immune to the whisperings of the Satan. But God abolishes what the Satan casts, so when it comes, but when it comes to the delivering of the, the scripture of the messages of God, God abolishes uh, what Satan casts and he makes firm his proofs. Um, but those in whose hearts is a disease, uh, they are still left wondering whether this is, this is from God or not. Um, and those given knowledge, they understand it to be from God. That is a truth from thy lord. So that's another reading of it. To continue, the dominion that day belongs to God. He will judge between them. Then will those who heed warning and do righteous deeds be in the gardens of bliss. And those who ignore warning and deny our proofs, those will have a humiliating punishment. And those who immigrated in the cause of God, then were killed or died, God will provide for them a goodly provision and God, he is the best of providers. He will make them enter by an entrance with which they will be satisfied. And God is knowing and clement that. And whoso retaliates with the like thereof, whereof he has was harmed and is oppressed, God will help him. God is pardoning and forgiving. So basically, when you retaliate, retaliate to the extent you were oppressed. Um, don't retaliate thinking, okay, I gotta destroy this person completely or this, this, this faction completely, so they can never recover. Because that's really what the war is all about, the art of war is about. Usually, the way wars are done is that you destroy, decimate the opponent completely. Uh, but then you enter into the realm of the zalimun, the wrongdoers. So God is saying, don't worry about that. Uh, i- i- if they, if they, you know, regroup and attack you, um God will help you anyway. So retaliate with the like that you have been harmed, okay? Don't, don't, don't cross the bounds. For it is that God makes the night enter into the day and makes the day enter into the night and that God is hearing and seeing. For it is that God, he is the truth and that to which they call besides him, it is vanity and that God, he is the exalted, the great. Does thou not see that God sends down from the sky water and the earth becomes green? God is subtle and aware. To him belongs what is in the heavens and what is in the earth and God, he is the free from need, the praiseworthy. Does thou not see that God made subject for you what is in the earth and the ships run upon the sea by his command? And he holds back the sky lest it fall upon the earth, saved by his leave. God is to mankind, kind and merciful. And he is that gave you life, then will he give you death, then will he give you life? Man is an ingrate. Or an unbeliever. Um, because he denies that God will raise him up again when he's already done all that. For every, for, for every community we appointed right for them to perform, then let them not dispute with thee concerning the matter and invite thou to thy lord, thou art upon right guidance. Now here, this is the thing, right? Because you start arguing with the Muslims. They're gonna, they have all these things. They're gonna throw at you, you know, and it says, just invite to your lord. Okay, don't get hung up on their specifics. Because the specifics are their specifics. It's nothing to do with God's guidance. God's God's guidance is, is general, you know, in the sense that it's for all mankind. And in the dispute with thee, say thou, God best knows what you do. God will judge between you on the day of resurrection concerning that wherein you differ. Knowest thou not that God knows what is in the heavens and the earth? That is in a writ, that is easy for God. And they serve besides God, that for which he has not sent down authority and that whereof they have no And they serve besides God, that for which he has not sent down authority and that whereof they have no knowledge and for the wrongdoers, there is no helper. This connects with the beginning of the chapter. And when our proofs are recited to them as clear signs, thou recognize this perversity in the faces of those who ignore warning. They all but attack those who recite our proofs to them, say thou, then shall I inform you of worse than that? The fire God has promised to those who ignore warning and evil is the journey's end. Oh mankind, a similitude is struck, so listen to it, those to whom you call besides God. Will never create a fly though they gather together for it. And if the fly snatch away something from them, they could not recover it from it, weak are the seeker and the sought. They measured God not with the measure due him, God is strong and exalted in might. God chooses from the angels messengers and from men, God is hearing and seeing. He knows what is before them and what following them and to God our matters return. Oh you who heed warning, be lowly and submit and serve your lord and do good that you might be successful. And strive for God with the striving due him, he has chosen you and has not placed upon you in doctrine any distress. The creed of your father Ibrahim, he named you those submitting before and in this. That the messenger might be a witness to you and that you might be witnesses to men. So uphold the duty and render the purity and hold fast to God, he is your protector, then excellent is the protector and excellent is the helper. So this really is the the key to the God protocol. Uh because we are the submitting, okay, this submitting, which is Muslimin Arabic, which Muslims say, we are the Muslimin. And they've taken this word and, you know, made into a a brand, okay, but they can't keep saying brother, brand Islam and he's correct. Muslim is is an identity at this point, right, that I'm the follower of the religion Islam. But that's not how the Quran uses this word, the Quran just use this word to mean submit. Okay, that's why it says when God said to Ibrahim submit, he said, I submit to the Lord of all mankind, so submit means to submit. That's what the word Muslim means and the messenger Muhammad be a witness to you. And. And that you might be witnesses to men. So that's your job, this is the believers, this is the believers, the Muslim, this is the Mormonin or the Muslimin's job to be witnesses to men. As in you need to proclaim the truth, that's your job. It's not to engage in, you know, that whole. Wearing a top or wearing a scarf and all that, there's nothing to do with this. Anyway, that finishes up chapter twenty-two, let's continue on with chapter twenty-three, in the name of God, the Almighty and Merciful. Successful are the believers, those who in their duty are humble and those who from vain speech turn away. And those who act upon the purity and those who preserve their chastity. Say with their wives or what their right hands possess, then are they not blame worthy? But whoso seeks beyond that, it is they who are the transgressors. And those who attend to their trust and their covenant and those who preserve their duties. It is they who are the heirs, those who inherit paradise, therein will they abide eternally. So these are the successful ones, okay, you're gonna see, talk about success and failure in this chapter. Those who in their duty are humble, now my understanding is that, yes, here is talking about um. The worship of God, okay, now, I don't subscribe with the ritual prayer idea that you have to have a certain, you know. Procedure, uh how to do things, uh but definitely calling to God, remembering God. Reading a scripture, this will all be encompassed in this duty, okay, so they are humble in their duty. And uh the and then these are, these are the other duties as well, you see, turning away from vain speech, acting upon the purity, preserving your chastity. Um they 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 keep their word, their trust. And those who preserve their duties, see, Salawat him, this is in the prayer. It's not the five prayers, this is talking about these uh these Salawats that just were just mentioned. It is they who are the heirs, those who inherit paradise, therein will they abide eternally. And we created man from an extract of clay, this is the first creation. The creation before this creation, then we placed him as a sperm drop in a secure fixed lodging, this is the second creation, the current creation. Then we created the sperm drop, a clinging thing and created a clinging thing of a flesh, a flashy lump. And created a flashy lump bones and clothed the bones with flesh, then we produced it as another creation. And blessed be God, the best of creators. Uh Wan Shano Khalqan Akhara, as in, and we uh raised up Khalqan Akhara, the next creation. Then after that, would you die, then on the day of resurrection, will you be raised, this is the third creation. And we have created above you seven paths and we are not heedless of the creation, as in we provide for you. Okay, we created above you seven paths, this is the seven skies, the seven heavens, that's the model that the Quran gives us about the the earth and the heavens. Uh this does not, in any, this is not in any way compatible, what we were taught by science, by NASA, so obviously they're lying. There are sevens heavens stacked upon each other and God is not heedless of of the creation, as in he is the Lord, he provides. Eighteen, and we have sent down from this, and we sent down from the sky water and measure and gave it lodging in the earth and we are able to take it away. And we produce for you there with gardens of date palms and grapevines, for you therein is much fruit and thereof you eat. And a tree that comes forth from Mount Sinai, yielding oil and a seasoning for the eaters. And for you in the cattle is a lesson, we give you drink of what is in their bellies and for you therein are many benefits and of them you eat. And upon them and upon the ships are you carried, the cattle is a lesson. Uh we get milk from there, from the milk, you get all these other things, cheese, yogurt, and then also we eat of their flesh. Uh then also we use their skin to uh produce out of a leather, um. Uh you use their um their poop for fertilizer, so there's a lot of things. And upon them and upon the ships are you carried, so and also they they bear our loads to a places where we could not um. Take our lords without, you know, distress to us. Now it shifts to the ships and then it shifts to Noah, Nuh, because Nuh's account is of him building a ship. And we sent Nuh to his people and he said, oh, my people, serve God, you have no God but he, will you then not be in prudent fear? Then said the eminent ones who disbelieved among his people, this is only a mortal like you, designed to take precedence over you. And had God willed, he would have sent down angels, we heard not of this among our fathers of old. He has, he is only a man possessed, so wait for him for a time. So the eminent ones, these are the oligarchs of today, okay, the the mosques and the Bezos and all these guys. Um and they were ruling over the people and they didn't really want any other competitions, so they're saying. Uh this is a mortal who designed to take precedence over you and kinda glossing over the fact that they are also mortals. And taking precedence over the generality, uh because those are the kinda tricks they play. Anyway, so they were, and they said, we heard not among this, uh this among our fathers of old, which they are lying. Okay, because the message has always been sent to many messengers, so this is a lie. This is the same lies that they give you today, okay, where uh you know. The past civilization, they even really much talk about what the where they were, what they were or 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 the artifacts. I mean, you have the some of the artifacts, obviously, which they can't hide, like the pyramids, but there are other civilizations which they are hiding, anyway. I don't wanna get into that because then we're gonna go into a different tangent, but just so you know, you're living in a controlled information age, right? Um um same characters. He said, my lord helped on me because they have denied me. And we instructed him, make thou the ship under our eyes and our instruction. Then when our command comes and the oven boils over, lead thou therein of each kind too. And thy household, save him against whom the word has gone forth among them. And address thou me not on behalf of those who do wrong, they will be drowned. And when thou seated, thou and whoso is with thee upon the ship, say thou, praise belongs to God who has delivered us from the wrong, you're doing people. So when you are seated on the ship and you and those whom who who are with you, who are the believers. Uh then uh say praise belongs to God. And say thou, my lord, set thou me down at a blessed landing place and thou art the best of those who sat down. In that are proofs and we are testing, then we produced after them another generation. And we sent among them a messenger from among them, serve God, you have no God but he, will you then not be in prudent fear? And these then said the eminent ones of his people, those who ignored warning and denied the meeting of the hereafter and to whom we had given opulence in the life of this world, they were rich. This is only a mortal like you, he eats of that whereof you eat and drinks of what you drink. And if you obey a mortal like ourselves, you will then be the losers. Does he promise you that when you are dead and are dust and bones, you will be brought forth? Firefash, firefash is what your promise, this is only our life of this world, we die and we live and we will not be raised up. Now, this is a generic messenger, uh because really the story connects uh Nuh, who was. In the Quranic accounts, he was the first messenger, as in the the earliest messenger. And then you have later on, um Musa, who was the last messenger before Muhammad, I mean, the Quran was being revealed to Muhammad, so. Uh just so you know, anyway. He said, my lord helped on me because they have denied me, he said, in a little while will they become remorseful, then a blast sees them with justice. And we made them as decaying herbage, then away with the wrongdoing people, then we produced after them other generations. No community outstrips its term, nor will they differ. Then we sent our messengers in succession, one after the other, see, that's God keeper, keeps renewing his message. Uh every time his messenger came to a community, they denied him and we caused some of them to follow others and made them legends. Then away with the people who do not believe, you see how precise the Quran is every time? Because if you wanna make that argument, wow, there was this one time where Jonah, uh. Yunus, he he he, his people believe, yeah, they believe, but he went to them a second time, the first time they denied him as well. Very precise, and we caused some of them to follow others and made them legends, then away with the people who do not believe. This is, by the way, the word of God which becomes binding. He destroys them, then away with the people who do not believe. And send me Moses, Musa and his brother Harun with our proofs and a clear authority to Philon and his eminent ones. But they had waxed proud and they were a self-exalting people. And they said, shall we believe two mortals like ourselves and whose people serve us? Then they denied them and were among those destroyed. And we gave Musa the writ, the writ that they might be guided, if you know anything about the story of Musa, Musa was given the Alkitab. Um which is the complete set of laws that is also encapsulated in the Quran. And we made the son of Mary and his mother, uh and we made the son of Maryam and his mother a proof. And we gave them shelter upon higher ground, a fixed lodging and a running spring, this is the account of the birth of Jesus, Isa. Oh you messengers, eat of the good things and work righteousness, I know what you do. And this, your community is one community and I am your lord, so be in prudent fear of me, one community, see? And but they divided their command among them into writings, each party exalting at what it has. This is exactly what the religionists and the sectarians do, they have divided the command of God, this is true for Muslims as well. You have the Sunni sect and the Shia sect and all these sects and they have their own books and they follow in their books, the Hadith and all that stuff. The 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 opinions of their dead scholars. So they divided the command, when the command was, you are one communities and I am your lord, so be in prudent fear of me. So leave thou them in their flood of ignorance for a time. To leave them. Think they that in the wealth and sons wherewith we supply them, we hasten for them good things, the truth is they perceive not. Now, if they are thinking that because they are given all these riches and opulence and they have wealth and sons. Uh that it is good for them, these are, they are the successful, uh that we are hastening for them the good things. Uh they perceive not because they are in a flood of ignorance, they don't understand the reality of the situation. Because the successful ones are the believers, okay, this is the 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 point of the surah. So again, we get to those believers, those who are from fear of their lord in dread. And those who believe in the proofs of their lord and those who ascribe not a partnership to their lord. And those who give what they give with their hearts in dread, that they are returning to their lord. Those compete in good deeds and they are forerunners therein. And we burden not any soul save to its capacity and with us is a writ which speaks the truth and they will not be wronged. Now, again, this picks up this argument that do they think that because we are hastening to them sons and wealth, that it is good for them? It's picked up here. The truth is their hearts are in a flood of ignorance about this, that they are given wealth and children, so they are the successful. And they have works besides that which they are doing, they are doing for their evil deeds. When we have seized their opperman wants with punishment, then will they cry out, see now, they are being repaired for their sins. Cry not out this day, you will not be helped by us, my proofs were recited to you and you turn back therefrom on your heels. Waxing proud their arch, talking to no purpose into the night. Planning by night. Had they not considered the word with care, if there has come to them what has come not to their fathers of old. Or if they did not know their messenger and so do not recognize that, recognize him, or if they say he is possessed. The truth is he has brought them the truth, but most of them are averse to the truth. They hate the truth. And the are uh the cases are set here, if. If have they considered the Quran, the the Quran would care, no, they haven't. If they has come to them, not to the father, as in as is something new that has come to them. No, it's the same thing, worship one god, serve one god alone, see? So, yes, it's the same thing. God is just renewing his message, or if they did not know their messenger, as in they did not recognize the messenger, they do recognize the messenger, Muhammad. Or if they say he's possessed. See, or if they, this is their argument, he's possessed. Or he's a mortal, you know, those were the arguments earlier, uh he's a man like you. The truth is he has brought them the truth, this is the reality of it, they don't like the truth, they don't, because the truth is against their vain desires. The truth is about, is about serving the one God and leaving off what they're doing. Leaving their religions, leaving their um evil ways, that they will not do. And had the truth followed their vain desires, the heavens and the earth and whoso is therein would have been corrupted. The truth is, we brought them their remembrance and they are from the remembrance, are they turning away? So if they vain desires, which is what, that there are multiple gods or that man is um is left alone to do whatever he wills. If that was what they they uh. If this was the truth, then everything would have been corrupted, the heavens and the earth would not be in order, they would be in disorder. But as we can see, everything is running with a certain. Um we were not a certain, with with complete regularity, with complete precision, okay? Because there is one God who is handling all the affairs. If thou acts, ask us of them payment, then there's a reward of thy lord better and he's the best of providers. If if they are having trouble accepting this message because they're saying, look, this guy is is asking for money. Um. That that's not the case either, the messenger was not asking for money from them, cause God, God's uh reward is better. And thou invited them to a straight path and those who believe not in the hereafter are deviating from the path. And were we to have mercy on them and to remove what is upon them of distress, they would persist in wandering blindly in in their inordinancy. See, if God would have, see, this this. You see people in the world and they're always crying about, well, why does this happen to me or, you know. Well, what I do wrong and, you know, if God were to remove that, what is in, they have a distress and give them wealth and children and sons and the material resources. They will still continue to wander blindly in their inordinancy, there would be no change in them. And we say seize them with the punishment, but they yielded not to their lord nor humbled themselves, see, God has already seized them with the punishment. Uh but they have not yielded to the lord, so e- either they get good or they get bad, they're still gonna continue on their path, the wrong path. When we have opened upon, against them a gate of severe punishment, then are there in in despair, this is obviously the. The the severe punishment, the Azab, which is, you know, the calamity. Then when that happens, then they are in complete despair. And he it is that produced for you hearing and sight and hearts, little are you grateful. And he it is that created you in the earth and to him will you be gathered. And he it is that gives life and gives death and his is the alternation of night and day, will you then not use reason? The truth is, they say the like of what the former people said, they say, when we are dead and are dust and bones, will we be raised? We have been promised this, we and our fathers before, these are only legends of the former peoples, see, it's the same message. That you will be raised up after you die. Say thou, to whom belongs the earth and whoso is therein, if you know, they will say to God, say thou, will you then not take heed? Say thou, who is lord of the seven heavens and the lord of the great throne? They will say God, say thou, will you then not be in prudent fear? Say thou, in whose hand is dominion of all things and he grants protection and against whom there is no protection, if you know. They will say in gods, say thou, how then are you taken by sorcery? See? Well, you are taken in by sorcery by the propaganda and brainwashing because you've been basically. You've been red on this lie that, you know, this lie. You've been reared on this lie that, you know, this life is all there is to it. And that these elites, these men power, they control your destiny. But just a simple questioning of all this reveals the true power belongs to God alone. The truth is, we brought them the truth and they are liars. God has not taken any son and there is not with him any god. Then would each god have taken what he created, then some of them would have overcome others. Glory be to God above what they describe. See? If the truth would have followed their vain desire, all they in in the heavens and the earth would have been corrupted, see here. If if there, if the truth was that God had taken a son or there was uh gods besides God, then. Each god would have taken what he created, his own army, and then some of them, they would fought with each other and you would have seen the sky. Rip apart and you know, all this stuff happening. None of that happens, right? Glory be to God above what they describe, the nor of the unseen and the seen, and exalted above that to which they ascribe a partnership. Say thou, my lord, if thou show me what they are promised, my lord, then place thou me not among the wrongdoing people. And we are able to show thee what we promised them. Repel thou the evil with what is better. We best know what they describe. And say thou, my lord, I seek refuge in thee from the goading of the Satans, and I seek refuge in thee, my lord. Lest they be present with me. When that has come to one of them, he says, my lord, send thou me back. So seek refuge in God from the Satans, from the goading of the Satans, from the provocations of the Satan. Satan, Satan's here is is from men and Jin, okay? When men, men follow these Satans, okay? Um they get to a point where they lose control, they become. Allies of the Satan, okay, they become Satan's themselves. And and it's talking about one of these Satans. Uh who is of the men. When that has come to one of them, he says, my lord, send thou me back. That I might indeed, that I might work righteousness in what I left behind. No, indeed, it is a word that he says, and behind them is a barrier until the day they are raised. There's no going back. And when the trumpet is blown, there then no ties of kinship are between them that day, nor will they ask one of another. Then whose balances are heavy, it is they who are the successful. See, successful are the believers. This is really a theme of the chapter. And who so, by who so, whose balances are light, those are they who have lost their souls in Gehenna, abiding eternally. The fire scorching their faces and they scowling therein. Were not my proofs recited to you and you denied them? They will say, our lord, our wretchedness overcame us and we were a people astray. Our lord. Turn thou us therefrom, if we return, then are we wrongdoers. He will say, be despised therein and speak not to me. A faction among my servants said, our lord, we believe, and forgive thou us. And have mercy on us, and thou art the best of those who have mercy. Then you took them in derision, until they made you forget my remembrance, and you laughed at them. I have rewarded them this day for their patience. They are the returners of success. He will say, how long you tired you in the earth by number of years? Though they will say, we tired a day or part of a day. Ask thou those who keep count. See, a day in the sight of our lord is a thousand years of what we count. So on that day, they'll realize the time spans. That this was. A day or part of a day that we were in this life. He will say, you tired only a little, had you but known, thought you that we only create you, created you of amusement, and that to us. You would not be returned. You know, I really thought about this a couple of times and. You know, it struck me, this is exactly what the atheists think. Exactly, this is exactly what they think, that God created them for amusement, and that they will never be returned to him. Because God knows what is in the hearts. Then exalted be God, the true king. There is no God save he, the lord of the noble throne. And whoso calls with God to another god, whereof he has no evidence, then is his reckoning, but with his lord. The false claimers of guidance will not be successful. And say thou, my lord, forgive thou and have thou mercy, and thou art the best of those who have mercy. So that finishes up chapter twenty three. God willing, we'll start on chapter twenty four in the next session. Uh until next time, peace and blessings be upon you.